Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. Thank you all for coming. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. And we do have an invocation which will be given by Dr. Wilbur Kelsey, Court Street Baptist Church. And Dr. Kelsey, would you please come forward with the invocation? And after that, we will have the pledge of allegiance. May we all stand, please?
I want to thank you all for the service you rendered to our city, being willing to be elected. All of you people are skilled, you have a great deal of experience, you're making our city better. I'm thankful for the city employees, for the people who live in our community, and I know that we can work together and we can continue to make this a wonderful community. So, thank you very much. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in your world. You've given to everyone the gift of life, and we want to use whatever opportunities and experience and background and intelligence we have to make your city a better place, our city. And we pray that you will give us strength and guidance in all that we do, that we may be faithful in your service. And we thank you again for the wonderful opportunity to live in your world. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Dr. Kelsey.
Yes?
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on May 10, 2022, and a regular meeting on May 10, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If there are not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
A second.
And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light and hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
And Madam Clerk, before we start the agenda with public hearings, I would ask my colleague, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, to please provide a welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to welcome the members of Portsmouth Alumni Chapter and beyond, members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We're glad to have you here for Delta Day. It's something that we do all the time, advocating for the issues that are germane to our community. We have college-educated, strong women who are advocacy in various areas, voting blocks of people, and representing our community very well. So, welcome, members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
And I would just like to add, our daughter is a member of that wonderful organization. We've come to the item of public hearings, item 22-151, UP 22-06. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item we're considering?
Yes, sir. West Quiddock Resolution granted the request of Mr. Singh for a use permit for a retail sales establishment at 3923 Deep Creek Boulevard on the 2516 Greenwood Drive parcel located in the urban residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Plan designates this property for institutional public development. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, the applicant has requested a two-month deferral on this particular public hearing, which would be coming back on July 26. Is there any discussion about this request or deferral, for deferral?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Could we hear from staff on this issue, the city manager?
I would turn it over to Deputy City Manager Baldwin.
Yes, Mayor, members of City Council, the applicant has requested a 60-day deferral. As was indicated, the Planning Commission had recommended denial. There were a number of concerns raised by the community during the Planning Commission public hearing, and the applicant has requested additional time to address the issues that were raised at that time.
So, the denial, was that based on the community concern?
Yes, primarily, yes.
Is it feasible to believe that that community concern is going to be addressed within that 60-day period?
Yeah, I really couldn't say it. I'm not sure exactly what the applicant would propose to do over the next 60 days.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I got a question. Can we proceed with voting on this item even with the request of the deferral?
City Attorney, would you like to take that question, please?
The question is, can you proceed with the item if he's requesting with the deferral?
Yes, I'm the liaison of the Planning Committee, and I looked over this project, and it seemed like it was numerous things that would probably hinder this project from being successful in that community. Traffic patterns, just the application process of an ABC license not wanted in that neighborhood. So, it's a lot of details that surround this particular project that I think we can take in consideration, along with some more details from Deputy City Manager Baldwin, and if possibly can be voted on today.
Yes, you can proceed, but you would have to hold, excuse me, you can proceed today, but you would have to still hold a hearing. You can't proceed without the hearing.
So, we are in need of a motion and a second for the deferral?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Is the community comfortable with giving him two months to make the corrections that they deem necessary to push the project forward?
Councilman Battle, that's a question for me. I could not answer on behalf of the other community. This is a request that was presented to council on behalf of the applicant, and I presume over the next 60 days is when the applicant will be proposing to meet with the community.
So, it is his intent to initiate the corrections that the community might need? Is he here?
They do have a representative here, yes.
Well, can we hear from them?
Sir, sir, if I may, we have the item on the table, and there's a motion, well, we haven't had a motion, but there is a request for deferral. So, with that in mind, we still would need to hold a hearing. So, the best way, I believe, to proceed forward is to put the motion, there is a call for a motion of deferral. I need a motion and a second, and then we will proceed.
I move to defer item UP 2206.
Second.
Second.
Point of order?
What is your point of order, sir?
The agenda item is to vote on the Planning Commission's recommendation, I thought.
The content asks for a deferral that was requested. So, if the deferral was requested by the applicant, that is the item in which we need to deal with.
Right.
So, we're dealing, sir, we're dealing with the deferral now. We have a motion and a second for the deferral.
Let me just make sure I'm clear with the city attorney, because it's a public hearing on a use permit, not on a deferral, and I just want to make sure that we're voting on the right thing.
I don't know if my mic is on, but you're voting on the item that's here on the agenda?
Right.
And that's what you're voting on?
Which is, which is a use permit.
And there is, I see a deferral letter on that, so you're voting on this item that's on the agenda?
Okay.
But a motion can be made on any item to defer any item. And if there's a second...
Madam Clerk, you have the floor, ma'am.
If you don't mind me helping out?
You have the floor, ma'am.
Okay. Council members, the normal procedure for when an item is requested by the applicant to be deferred is council has allowed the applicant the time to make the adjustments that they're requesting in order to bring the item back to council. In this particular case, if you chose to vote on this item today, you're voting on the item, not on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And just for information, when we receive requests for deferral, the information on the item is then pulled from your agenda, and we put in the recommendation for deferral, because that has been the procedure that council has wished for us to do, because they normally defer it to allow the applicant time to make adjustments.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for a deferral. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes.
No.
Mr. Battle.
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Woodard.
No.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
The motion to defer has been denied for three. So, now you're back into your public hearing.
That is correct.
With the applicant being here, I would recommend having the applicant come forward, and they have in the 10 minutes you would normally allow for a presentation.
Welcome, sir. If you would state your name and address, please.
Robert Kellum, I'm the engineer on the project, sir. We were kind of surprised at Planning Commission, because we had been working with staff and got a favorable recommendation from them to be granted the conditional use permit. Some of the residents, too, in fact, spoke in opposition due to the fact they were concerned about people in the area it may bring, let's say, I don't want to use the word undesirable, but people looking for other than just where is to be purchased. We wanted to ensure this body that we were going to do everything within our power, because it wasn't a question that came up about land use. It came up about the community that we were serving. We have done some research with some police officers to find out the best value for surveillance camera. Some surveillance cameras are very unique in the fact that you can zoom on the screen at the time you're viewing it, which is advantageous to the police doing their investigation. You also can buy, say you're doing surveillance camera, with a Ring camera on your doorbell. Those are not worth anything to help the community. We were asking for a deferral for 60 days, do proper research, and bring that to this body. My client has purchased property in Portsmouth, thinking that because it was previously a butcher shop, he would have the right to do this. He was kind of surprised when we did the research and found out that we would have to re-implement a conditional use permit for retail use. He purchased the property from a church who represented themselves as it could be utilized as a community store. So, I'm hoping this body, I'm here to answer any questions, because I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I did want to let you know that, yes, sir. I did want to let you know...
Hold on, sir. Are you finished with your comments? You said you want to take questions?
Well, I just want, I want to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So, you're finished with your comments, now you're open for questions?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
So, can you tell us anything about it? Like, you said a community store, what do you mean by community store, for the citizens?
I have visited his store in Suffolk. I've met the gentleman there, because we were doing some additional work there. It's a, let's say, a smaller, more food representative, it's more like a convenience store that used to be, that you had meals that were prepared and could be taken home. And that's what he wants to do in this area, to serve the community. Yes, sir.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to be clear, you guys are prepared and, I'm sorry, you guys are prepared to apply for ABC license for this particular establishment?
That is a separate permit. I do not know. First of all, I think you have to operate for a certain period of time before you are able to apply for that. And security is a prime interest now, and as it has been, but particularly now with the events that...
But it is a part of your plans?
Beg pardon?
It is a part of your plans.
Now, I'm not speaking today on his plan, because I don't know it, sir. I mean, it would be, once he has the use and he has served the community a certain period of time, I believe that, I think that even comes back before you, or at least this body is notified of it.
So, you're speaking on behalf of just the building itself, not the actual business that'll be going inside?
No, sir. I'm speaking on behalf of my client who purchased the building itself.
Right, so you don't have any information on what the exact business that your client will be doing?
No, sir. I know the business. You asked me about another permit that may be required.
Right, so during the planning...
Whether or not he was going to seek that, and I have no knowledge of that, so I'm not going to mislead this body.
Well, we need more details for us to even go forward.
That was kind of why we asked for the deferral, but in any event, Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I heard enough during the planning committee, Mr. Mayor. So, maybe you don't know the information, but I do.
Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Before we voted, I tried to get you up to explain what was going on, and it was deemed inappropriate, and then we went on and voted. But that's what I was trying to do, to...
I apologize for not reading.
To get you up, and you explain what you intended improvements and satisfying the community and so forth, and that's all I was doing. But, we deemed it inappropriate at that time, and we proceeded to vote, and let me apologize to you for that.
Well, there's no reason for apology, because I was, you reached out to the community, and I cannot speak for the community. I'm here representing my client. And although I wasn't expecting you to speak, I hope that I can answer all your questions.
Really, all I wanted was to know what your intent, or your client's intent, was to satisfy the community. That's all I, I know you can't speak for him, but if there's a problem, how do you and your client intend to alleviate the problems that are holding you back?
Well, although I can't present the material that we are trying to generate at this time, we are doing the research on the best value surveillance cameras available. And I use that, because we looked at one system, and it was quite, at all the bells and whistles, but sometimes you can't buy the band. And so, we are, we are looking at the surveillance cameras on this facility that will assist, if asked, the police community and the community. So, I hope that answers your question, that we are going to work with the community. We're there to serve them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, was your client going to be here tonight? Because obviously, he's the operator, so he's the one that could really answer the questions.
Unfortunately, like I said, I was, I asked staff if I should bring a formal letter and everything else, and they said, no, this is pretty much a routine request, when you are trying to address the community concerns. I mean, these were not concerns that we walked into Planning Commission knowing. These were items not for land use, but for the community itself, helping them protect everyone there.
Yeah, and I would think that the community is probably more concerned with the operation and what's going to be sold. You mentioned ABC, and that can go two ways. It can be on premises, off premises. So, I would think a lot of the concerns can only be answered by your client, the operator. Is that correct?
That is true, because I was asked about the ABC license, and I do not know, sir.
Because I would think that would be a big community concern.
Yeah. In some locality, the participant can remove the consideration for a period of time. Could we reconsider our request for deferral?
Yeah. Well, that's why some of us wanted to defer it, to be fair to all parties. You know, I'm in favor of a tax-producing business. We need lots of them. But to make a decision tonight on the fate wouldn't be fair to your client, and wouldn't be fair to the community, because they have questions that they want answers to.
I was hoping you would feel that way. Like I say, I'm hoping that there's a possibility to be reconsidered for a deferral.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I think from speaking to some of the citizens and some people on the Planning Commission, and I'm sure Councilman Woodard can speak to this, the concerns from the citizens was that it was going to be a convenience store with more alcohol and a bunch of things that they just didn't want in the community. As somebody who actually don't stay too far from that location, probably about one or two minutes, I think I can speak as part of the community as well, that me personally, I'm not in favor of that, being in that particular spot.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor, and then Councilman Woodard.
Yes, this is for staff, again, for the city manager, direct staff. In the write-up, it says it's located in urban residential zoning, but then it says the future land use map has it designated for institutional public development. So, what is the difference between institutional public development and the urban residential?
Okay, so, at the time, the comprehensive plan, future land use map was done, this was identified as a church, and that's why it was picked up on the future land use map as institutional, just recognizing that the use at the time that the future land use map was done was institutional. The urban residential is primarily residential district. But like in many of our districts, we have mixed use, in this case requiring a use permit for the convenience store.
Okay. So, when the comprehensive map was done, the church was operational?
I couldn't say the church was operational, but that was the last known land use there.
So, the church was not operational?
I couldn't say that. I don't know.
If it were not, what does institutional public allow for?
Well, again, if it's in the future land use plan, that doesn't really designate specific land uses. It's a general land use identifier. The specific land uses are all regulated under the zoning ordinance. So, that urban residential zoning district is what dictates the allowed land uses, not the comprehensive plan designation.
So, when you left it as, when you left it on the comprehensive plan as institutional public, what was the rationale for that?
Well, at the time, again, the last known land use there, when the map was being done for the comprehensive plan, was institutional land use, and so that was what was picked up in the land use map.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Baldwin, was there any speakers at the Planning Commission based off of this issue?
Yes, there were a number of speakers at the Planning Commission meeting, as they're identified in the minutes were provided to the City Council with the staff report.
Absolutely. So, that is the community voiced their opinion about this particular project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We've now come to the item of the city manager's report. Are we dealing with the public hearing matter?
Council members, you all decided not to defer this item?
Correct.
So, what is before you is consideration of this item as it is? So, you do need to have a public hearing, unless one of the four who voted to deny it want to, again, defer it.
Okay. So, we move forward with the public hearing. This is a public hearing. As such, anyone that is in the audience who wishes to come speak on this matter, it is now your time to come forward and speak, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council, and other neighbors. As somebody who was present at the Planning Commission meeting when this item came up, I was dismayed by the outcome of the proceeding. Staff had given a positive recommendation for this particular project. When the Planning Commission members took their vote, nobody explained the reason for his or her vote. So, it was, as I recall, was a 5-1, five opposed, one in favor. It's my belief that public officials, whether elected or appointed, have a responsibility to the public to explain the actions that they are taking. And I did not find their actions self-evident. Yes, there were about three public speakers, as I recall, who were negative, and they were from the community, and I am not from that specific community. But it is my interest as a citizen of Portsmouth to ensure that all communities are treated fairly, and that all people who come to our city to do business are treated fairly as well. I don't believe that the applicant was treated fairly then, and I don't think failure, your refusal, rather, to acquiesce in allowing this item to be deferred, so that the applicant can do more to address community concerns, is equitable treatment. It sends a bad message about Portsmouth. We like to say Portsmouth is open for business. This definitely does not reinforce that message, quite the contrary. So, I do not see where the harm lies in your accommodating the applicant. He is a person who has laid out money to a... He is a person who has laid out money to acquire this property, and he did so in the belief that he would have a fair chance to make his case to open the kind of business that he wants to run here. I don't believe that proceeding at this point in time gives him that opportunity. So as a matter of equity, I ask that you defer this item, that you reconsider your vote, which requires the, the maker of the motion to be somebody who had voted not to defer. And that you give this person an opportunity to reach out to the community, see if they can reach some kind of agreement that allows them to go forward and satisfies current community objections, and then consider it in two months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Did, did we tell the, the person that they shouldn't come 'cause it's gonna be deferred?
Let me answer that question. Uh, no. What we advise the applicant, as we always do when they request deferral, is they should show up, because city council may decide to consider the item. So we do.
So he knew he should've showed up?
We advise the agent, that's who you had here tonight, the agent for the applicant, to be here tonight, because council, even though you made a request for deferral, city council is not obligated to accept it.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So, Mr. Baldwin, just, just so I get a clearer picture, is, is this what we normally would consider a corner store type of operation that the vendor is trying to establish?
Yes, this will be a small convenience store.
Okay, yeah. Um, what's, and I don't know if you might know this, but what's the closest grocery store to, in that area?
The food line, George Washington Highway.
Right. Approximately, what's the distance about, you know?
Two mi, yeah, two miles, thereabouts.
Yeah. The, the reason I'm asking, 'cause it's, you know, it's a, a major national discussion that hasn't just started, but it's been going on, but this massacre at the Tops Grocery Store raised the issue of food deserts and also investment in certain communities, and how we see certain type of investments going in one community versus another. And that's why I was asking about whether this was a corner store, convenience store type, type of setup, because that has been a concern that has been expressed in many communities about the type of products that are, that are placed there. And so I, I think that may have been some of the sentiment, and when I heard you mention some of the residents spoke against that, that, that may have been some of that thing.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
If this is gonna be a convenience store type operation, I think it's important to note that the 7-Eleven that was at the corner of George Washington and Victory recently closed up, so perhaps that's why the applicant saw an opportunity, just for what it's worth.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
There's another convenience store at the corner of Victory and George Washington. I can't think of the name. Freedom. Freedom Convenience Stores on that corner. And then you have, you have the 7-Eleven that's down the street on Deep Creek, then you have the Getty Mart, then you have the BP, then you have the one in the shopping center on, on, I mean, it's like 70 stores already there.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Um, the planning commission denied it. We had folk from the community that said no. Now, I understand concerned citizens, and I know concerned citizens like to help folk out. And I'm sure, Mark, there very well may be some land in Old Town or some land in Churchland that could possibly accommodate such a situation as this. But we have to do the people's will, and they had folk that said no, the planning commission said no. I asked the applicants to come up and explain exactly what they were gonna do. I gave them every opportunity under the sun. Therefore, I'm very comfortable with my vote, but there very well may be some land in Old Town or Churchland that they could put such a venture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. You do not have to have signed up to speak at this public hearing. Ma'am, would you please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
You wanna know my name?
Absolutely.
I'm Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood, and I believe in principles of liberty. And this one, the majority of people may alter or abolish a government which has become tyrannical. The other one, the God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people, whole people, not one or two. They asked for a continuance. They asked, and what I'm hearing is a big discussion to prove that those who are saying no are right, and the applicant is wrong.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I just wanna know, for clarification purposes, were they told that they need to be here?
Um, yes, again, as we indicated, even though they submitted a request for deferral, we advised them to be at the meeting.
So we did not tell them that they shouldn't come 'cause it was gonna be deferred?
We did not.
So we, in essence, we are giving them a chance to, to be here, to present?
We always advise applicants that when an item is presented before city council, they should be present.
And they chose not to.
Their agent is here.
Okay. Thank you.
Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this matter can come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We need a motion and a second?
Motion to deny.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No.
The item is denied for three.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now moved to city manager's report on the agenda, item 22-152. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this agenda item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting ARPA, ARPA, mental health block grant funding in the amount of $29,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 BHS fund for planning, training, and staff development.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't see that we have any registered speakers for this particular item, so council members, is there any further discussion on this item?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-153. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to establish the name of the neighborhood park at 2715 Bagley Street, the Wilson Ward Gospel Meditation Garden.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-154. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Division 1 of Article 3 of Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Building Code generally, by deleting Section 7-103D, and to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, by deleting the corresponding fee for the purpose of eliminating the commercial reinspection requirement.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-155. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $24,000 of community development block grant program income and $29,895 of home investment partnerships program income and appropriating said amounts in the FY 2022 Community Planning and Development Program Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-156. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the city to participate in firearm buyback programs and destroy surrender firearms.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
We are in need of a motion and a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
We have speakers.
Which one? Oh. Some of the speakers?
Oh, we have two speakers.
Yes, sir.
We have Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle. You have five minutes, sir.
Good evening. I thought y'all might've skipped past us speakers.
No, I, I apologize. I'm looking at several pieces of paperwork.
That's okay. Good evening, ma'am, city council, city manager, and other citizens. This ordinance authorizing the city to participate in the firearm buyback program was initiated, I think, last year. Roanoke did it, Richmond did it, and it was a, they had a good turnout. My question to the city council is, why didn't we include it in our city crime prevention plan? It's nowhere in here. I think that we should've included it, because this is another measure for crime prevention. It makes no sense. Again, if we can put it on as an agenda item, it should've been in our crime prevention plan. I don't know if you guys read it or not, but I read this thing three times, and it's, it's not good at all. I'll be honest with you. It's not good. And it's just my personal opinion. It's, it's really really like a ninth-grade essay, to be honest with you. And you guys speak about the things that are going on in the city. I think it's a good thing on the surface, because I know of two people who've gotten murdered, and to kind of find out some of the weapons that they, they got killed with were stolen weapons. So, again, the gun back program would be a plus, but, again, why didn't we include it into our crime prevention policy and our plan, and that, you know, that we spent so much time on? And our citizens probably don't, haven't even read this policy, this plan, and it should've been in there. And I, my question again, how many council people have read this policy? So that I won't be looking like I'm being facetious or mean. I spoke with, I spoke with Ronald Taylor this weekend, last Thursday, I went to the Hefter Rose Black Caucus, 10-year anniversary, I was there. I spoke with the young man who's gonna be running the, who's running the gun back program, and what they told me is, they're waiting on Portsmouth to give them a location and a time. And what we serve, what my organization serves, we service families who've been victims of gun violence. And again, why wasn't it in the crime prevention plan? Why hadn't we been proactive? You know, it's, it's easy to say things that we do, like a lot of things, like I heard one of the council members say something about the blighted communities, that he didn't know that, what can we do? It's in the crime prevention plan. If, that means he didn't read it. So I'm just saying, if you're gonna speak on, if we're gonna speak on something, especially dealing with crime prevention, I think the city council should've read this, and I might be wrong, but hey, I don't think some of y'all read this crime prevention plan, to be honest with you. And again, like I said, I spoke with the president of the Hefter Rose Black Caucus, and they're waiting on us. Unseen tears would be, would love to be a partner up if you don't have a location. We'll do it for free, because it's, it's needed. It leads, we can, at least we're showing the community that we're trying, and we're not waiting around, because again, we gotta have funding, you gotta be able to pay the people something to get the guns back. So it's a lot going on with this, and a lot of people may think I'm just coming up here blowing smoke, but again, you don't have to talk to the mothers on a daily basis. It may not be of importance to you, like one of the council members said to me, that why do I come up here saying the things that I say like it's not important? I can tell you why. You didn't read the crime prevention policy. And if I'm lying, prove it that I'm lying. Because I know, I read it so well this week, I didn't go nowhere. So I can prove to you that you were wrong in what you said about the things you said in previous council meetings. Again, our organization, our mothers who are here, can the mothers stand up, please? We're here for the city. We're here for the council. Use us because there's a need. Don't use us because you wanna vote. There's an issue, and there's a problem going on in our community, and the gun back program is just something on the surface. We need more, and I, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor to ask the question, if you so choose.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Cradle. You're here at just about every meeting, and I think it's good that you keep the problem in front, not only this council, but the, the city at large. And I like your passion. You know, the buyback program, to me, it's one of those things, well, it can't hurt anything, but studies do show that it's not very effective as far as getting the, the guns from the people that wanna use them in a bad way off the street. Unfortunately, those people are not gonna sell their gun. That's how they make their living, or it's how they end the lives of too many people in this country. But there again, perhaps, perhaps it, it helps a little bit. I will vote for it on those parameters, but I think there are a lot of other ways to, to deal with what's going on, you know, with the senseless killings. But thank you for your passion. Thanks for being here.
Can I respond, ma'am?
Response, sir.
And, and, Mr. Moody, I appreciate you. Again, the first program started in Roanoke, Virginia, and Richmond, and one city collected 91 weapons, another city collected 33 weapons. I think that's essential when you're dealing with firearms, because it only take one gun to kill one person or several people. So again, I mean, I applaud you, you know, your statistics, 'cause I read the same statistics that they, the buyback programs may not work on the surface, that's why I say on the surface, but in hindsight, one gun can kill several people. So that's why I think it's, it's, it's vital to my. So that's why I think it's, it's vital to myself. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Sure.
Councilman, thank you, sir. Councilman Battle, then Councilwoman Lucas Berg, and then Vice Mayor Barnes. You have the floor, sir.
Well, sir, I have no problems voting for this item because the funding is gathered by the Black Caucus, and they're just waiting for us to vote yes. They're gonna get the funding and implement the program. So I, I don't have a problem with this at all.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you will be after. Councilwoman Lucas Berg.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cradle, good to see you again. The strategic plan that you have before you, as if in any strategic plan, is a working document. It is meant to be revised and reworked and added to, and of course, this adoption of this ordinance could not go into it until council authorizes the city manager to approve that. So that's one of the reasons why this information or this, this piece of buyback program is not listed in the strategic plan, which will probably change again. It's gonna be some other things that, that are not in there that you haven't seen as we learn more about the crime, as we learn about the violence, as we find out more from our chief of police about the Shot Spotters program. Those things will come in the future. So I will be voting for it because even if we get one gun, five guns, or ten guns off the street and back into the hands of responsible persons, then we have started to make progress.
And Mrs. Lucas, the only reason I said that, Ms. Mayor, the only reason I said why wasn't in the crime prevention policy because when I read this, it says it's continuing, just like you said. You have, if you have something in this policy that's, city exploring reward tips, city developing reward system to ensure the protection of witnesses ongoing. So again, even if you don't have it, why wasn't it in the prevention plan? You can say that you, that you can mention it and not have it, but you didn't mention it at all. That's all I'm saying.
Not with this council. They want to have the authority to say they approved it before it's written in black and white.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Um, I yield my time.
Councilman Woodard, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your insight, Mr. Cradle, as well. You know, I, I would definitely be supporting this adoption because any day we can get one gun out of a kid's hand is, is a victory in my book, so I would definitely be supporting this. I just want to know, could we get some insight from our chief? Did he ever participate in a buyback program? Give us a little bit more insight on that and how effective it could be to a community.
Chief, would you come for him? You can be seated now, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members.
Chief.
In my forty years, I've participated in a few gun buybacks. What we generally get is what was left in the closet by someone who passed on, something that was left in the house that a parent or somebody wants to get rid of. It's not typically the weapons that we see being used in crimes on the street that we get. I'll say now that initially I was against a gun buyback, but somebody said something to me, which was, what if that gun buyback program gets a gun out of a house that could have been stolen and used in the commission of a crime? Changed my whole world. How successful is it? That's up in the air, because you have to realize, once we get those weapons off the streets, we don't do anything else with them. They're not viable evidence that we can use in a court of law. So we collect them and we destroy them. The next thing is, like it was said earlier, is that the Black Caucus is funding this entire thing. The police department's contribution will be having a detective on scene in an unmarked car to make sure they're not interfered with. All they do is ask for a location. I've already partnered with Pastor Barry Randall. We have locations set up that we could probably use, and once it's passed, we'll go ahead and we'll make it happen. All we're waiting for is a word.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, chief. While you're up here, I had a couple of concerns myself that I had expressed earlier in our public work session. That is, and you mentioned some of it, that, is there any data that shows how effective these programs have been in reducing gun violence?
I think what you find is varied. Any solid proof? I think it's subjective what you'll find.
Yeah.
I think it's the effort just to get that one gun off the street that could help prevent a crime. What are we gonna get here in Portsmouth? I don't know. I don't know how many weapons we'll get off the streets. But like I said, I'm hopeful that anything that we get off the street will be able to help us prevent another crime.
And then you, you mentioned something to that written down as a question. That is, who's turning in these guns in these gun buyback programs? Because, just because you see guns being turned in, that doesn't necessarily mean those are the ones who are actually out here committing gun violence. And so I don't think we have real data on that, and that's my hesitancy in voting for something like this that it, on the surface, it looks like it's doing something, but we don't have any data or anything suggesting that it's had any outcomes. And then the last question I have, when, when you speak of the Black Caucus, are you talking about in the General Assembly or the Hampton Roads Black Caucus?
That would be the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. They actually approached us and asked if we can go and have an ordinance enacted so they can do a gun buyback here in Portsmouth. They did one in Norfolk. I'm not sure what the outcome was of that. I'm not sure how many weapons they got. As far as controlling who turns in a weapon, we have no control over it. It's advertised, and anybody that brings a gun to them, they'll accept and pay them all for it.
Okay. I just want to be careful how we're using black with Hampton Roads Black Caucus as if it's this encompassing group that has a black agenda, because I'm not real sure who they are.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir. Thank, 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 thank you, ma'am, but you, you weren't a registered speaker, so we, we'll keep moving on. I'm sorry. The next speaker on this item is Conrad Shesventer. Conrad?
Good evening. I've imagined myself in the City Council chair. I've sought such a seat in another city. When important topics are before council like this one, I want my voice to make a difference, but without being in such a seat, I advocate. And my avocation comes from, you know, organizations like the seven-five-seven Battle Cats. I'm a member of the Virginia Beach Progressive Caucus, the Virginia Beach Simocratic Committee. Now I own a house in Greenway Court in the West Haven community in Portsmouth, so my taxes and my voice will advocate here in Portsmouth. And on the matter of gun violence, I'll be clear. Guns take lives. Look at Buffalo's race-based hate crime, or my home city, Virginia Beach's mass shooting. Look at Hampton Roads for a year. To me, guns are nothing but cold devices used to fire metal projectiles at people. Their purpose is gore. That doesn't mean I'm blind to the community. I'm reading Huey P. Newton's Revolutionary Suicide. I acknowledge their Second Amendment embracing and using shotguns to defend their communities from police brutality, but I recognize our bloody streets now where the community is battling itself with guns, and that doesn't mean Portsmouth doing a gun buyback is worth much. In fact, if I was a Portsmouth City Council member, I'd probably vote no. Philosophically, I'm not against a private citizen selling their guns to the government for police destruction, but I'll point out, remaining those specific guns for circulation, removing them won't do much. A study reported this year looked at the National Incident-Based Reporting System and the National Vital Statistics System, finding no evidence that a program like this reduces gun violence and suicide. It's simple. People more willing to use such a device are going to keep it. To reduce gun violence, you'll need a massive federal prohibition, like you've seen in other developed nations. You'll need to end the drug war. You'll need a massive social welfare system that eliminates violence at its source, grinding poverty filled with need and want. Other ordinances tonight were closer to that, with grants to mental health and community development. A gun buyback program fits the bill more of political posturing, doing a move not based on effectiveness, but to reduce or deflect blame on figures such as yourselves. I'd own up to that if I was on council, and I'd vote no to send a message that we must vote on programs for more earnest community help, not duds. So thank you all, and remember, organizations like the Community Action Team are watching your decisions and will judge accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So after the guns are collected, who takes the guns? The, the police department?
They're destroyed.
Oh, the, the police department takes it. I'm not, I'm not totally against it. I just don't want any, anybody to get the false narrative that because we take guns from people, that the crime is gonna stop in Portsmouth. We gotta, we have to put real policies in place that deal with the root issues of why crime is happening in the first place. And until we do that, it doesn't matter how many guns you take off the street, that will not stop the real issue of what's causing people. I always say when a crime happens today, when somebody gets shot, somebody goes to the hospital or jail, the problem didn't start today. It started when they was able to choose that lifestyle. So we gotta stop them from choosing that lifestyle.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers. We do, we, we already have a motion in a second, so we need to take the vote now. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Berg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted for three.
We have now come to item twenty-two dash one-five-seven, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, a resolution to acquire three-twenty Quebec Street.
Council members, we are need of a motion in a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
We have a speaker, sir.
Oh, yes, Ms. Donna Si, my good friend.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Agenda item twenty-two dash one-five-seven is for the elected representatives of the people to ask for the people's consent to receive three-twenty Quebec Street as a deed of gift from the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. The three-twenty Quebec Street is located in the historic district of Port Norfolk. The background information in the city manager's report submitted by Bob Baldwin, Deputy City Manager and Director of Planning, gives a report that includes several years ago, city affiliated entities, including Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission and Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, acquired a number of properties in the Sugar Hill section of Port Norfolk. PRHA acquired three-twenty Quebec Street at a tax sale in two thousand and five. The report goes on to say, while the acquisitions with a S on it were originally made with an eye towards potential development of this section of Port Norfolk. Later on, the city planners decided that development was not desirable because Sugar Hill section of Port Norfolk is too low-lying and has too many flooding concerns. At the request of City Council in two thousand and thirteen, Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission conveyed all its properties in the Sugar Hill section of Port Norfolk to the city. Currently, PRHA has a resolution to deed three-hundred-and-twenty Quebec Street to the city through a deed of gift. The city has determined that the area of Port Norfolk is in a stormwater and flood zone, so the city will pay for the demolition of the house that is on a quarter acre of land and maintain the property as an open space, as the city does with numerous other properties that it owns in Sugar Hill. Let's do an inventory of the information to obtain the people's consent to go along with this resolution without the people obtaining any prior knowledge of the purchasing of property by city affiliated entities. A taxpayer couldn't afford to pay the taxes of almost two thousand dollars, so PRHA purchased this property and rented it out. Did PRHA give tax credits to the renter? Did the renter pay thirty percent of his or her adjusted gross income for the rent? How much rent money was supplemented by HUD? The city has raised the real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and raised the utility fees to allow the cities entities, cities entities, to purchase property at the people's expense without his or her knowledge or even his or her consent. In addition to this information, the Economic Development Authority has received nineteen properties from PRHA. We, the people, say no. Do not demolish this property, rehabilitate it, and make it a duplex, and put homeless people, I try to help, in both sides. By the way, all of Port Norfolk floods. I went to visit a friend on Douglas Avenue after it rained one day. Talk about flooding? That street was flooded with water. Do you want to demolish her house? Stop spending our money. Rehabilitate, repair, fix. Let people buy vacant property, not the city's entities, without our knowledge and consent. Represent the people, and stop spending the people's money to create even more of a housing shortage in some areas and redevelop other areas, so the representatives can steal more of the people's money through higher taxes due to increased property values.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I, I would like to ask my colleagues if they would consider, as I mentioned, in our public work session, deferring this item. As I mentioned before, three-twenty Quebec Street is located, as we know in our report, Sugar Hill, the old Tennis Point community, which the Martin Luther King Expressway, as part of other projects across the country, went through the middle of a black neighborhood. That community has received a lot of damage as a result, and my concern is that, as the write-up said, it was purchased for future development. My, my question is to the city assessor, if it is the wish of council, that we get some type of data on the assessed values of those properties when they were sold and when some of them went for tax, tax sale. The second issue is whether that property is owned by, paid real estate taxes by PRHA. And if so, then why would we be taking it off of the tax rolls? And is that actually a flood area overall? And so I, I would think before those questions, before we can vote, there, there are a lot of issues that that community has been impacted over the years. I just want to make sure that equity is done to the former owners of that property, if there are any issues there. So I would ask, if we don't have that type of information, if we could defer this vote until we get that information from the city assessor.
We do have, before we, did I ask for a motion or a second yet on that? We have a motion in a second, and so in order for us to defer it, we would have to have a motion to defer?
Or either the council person can withdraw their motion.
Excuse me. I, I was getting ready, getting ready to complete my sentence. Or the council member can, can withdraw, but also, also, and Madam, Madam City Attorney, if you would correct me on this, we, we can withdraw it and then bring it back, but, yes, go ahead.
Withdraw the actual motion and bring it back?
Withdraw the motion and then have a motion to defer.
You, yes. You want to withdraw the motion. The person who made the motion has to withdraw the motion.
Correct.
And then another motion is made.
Right, because, but don't we have to have a consensus to defer the item, or we don't, don't have to have that? Or we don't have to have that? Or we can just vote on it?
You can make the motion and vote.
Okay.
Hold on a minute.
Council members, if you want to defer this item, if the maker and the second would just say they changed their motion from approval to deferral, please.
Okay. Very good. The maker and the second. Yes.
I withdraw.
I will withdraw to give us an opportunity to get the additional information.
So, you're moving to defer?
I move to defer.
And the second person? The person who seconded?
Councilman Moody is the second?
Correct.
I withdraw that.
So, you second to defer?
Yeah.
Are we deferring this to the next meeting, or to what date?
Let's defer it to the next meeting. That should give us enough time. Would that give us enough time, Madam Manager, to get the information?
This is the city assessor to respond.
The assessor? Would that give us enough time?
Sir, ma'am.
Okay. Very good.
So, that's deferral to June the 14th?
Yes, ma'am. So, do we have a motion and a?
You have a motion and a second to defer to June 14th.
So, then, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Madam City Attorney. Our next item is item 22-158. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing an arrangement with the City of Hampton regarding the use of City of Portsmouth biz at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to the item of new business, item 22-159. And Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward for consideration?
Yes. We have reappointments and some new appointments. I'm going to start off with the reappointments. For criminal, for Community Criminal Justice Board, we have Latoya Hill, Brian Mills, Sergio O'Neil, Mr. Varghese, Nathan Woodard. And for Clean Community Commission, we have Benjamin Foster and Melania Foster. For History Commission, we have Regina Humphrey. For Ty Water Youth Service Commission, Catherine Graham. And this is for the reappointment. And now, the appointments, we have for Behavior Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Ashley McBride, Rodney Jones. For Board of Zoning Appeals, Sandra Boone. For Clean Community Commission, Maisha Clemens, Victoria Geither. Community Criminal Justice Board, Shetan De Clayton. For Community Policy and Management Team, William Wimbush. Downtown Design Committee, we have Kenneth Rogers, Stefan Santiago. History Commission, May Brickinridge Hayward. Law Laboratory Board, Victoria Ward. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Patricia Knight. Newport Development Authority, Stephanie Elliott Williams, and Sean Garfield. Pox and Recreation Commission, Daniel Terry, Nicole Williams, Eugene Johnson, and Marissa For Portsmouth Parking Authority, Sandra Boone and Catherine, I can't pronounce her last name, but we'll definitely inform her. Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission, Renika Jackson. Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, Stephanie Wright. Social Service Advisory Commission, Avina Grede. Southeastern Public Service Authority, Robert Ball. These are who we have for consideration. Hopefully, we can get the approval of council.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 22-160. Item submitted by council. Council members, do you have any items to submit? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Miss Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda for the night to add an item.
That would take a consensus of council to amend the agenda, sir. So, do we have a consensus of council to amend the agenda? That would take four people. And what item you wish to add, sir?
The item deals with the termination of the city manager.
The termination of our city manager, okay? Okay? Do we have a consensus of four people that will vote yes for the item to be added? Let me see a show of hands. Okay? The item is added to the agenda.
I move that we terminate the contract for the city manager, Angel Jones, immediately, and to place as the interim city manager, Mrs. Terry, who will receive a 10% pay increase.
Thank you, sir. And so, before we go to a second, I'm going to take mayoral privilege, and I'm going to add some comments, because I think one of the speakers came up earlier and indicated it is the public officials.
Did we get a second?
Well, we need a second first. I'm sorry. We need a second. That's right. Can I have a second? Second. Okay. Okay. So, that was on that matter. So, what I want to make clear to everyone, because it is important, we as public leaders and public officials who are elected leaders, it is important that we and you, the community, know what this is. And I don't have any problems sharing with you, the community, what this is. I was informed, and some of us on council, three of the members on council, were informed that last Thursday, our city manager, who has done a phenomenal job and has only been here a year. This lady, this lady of integrity and of purpose, has done a phenomenal job here in the city of Portsmouth. But it's important, because I'm not a guy that runs from a battle. I want you to know that, and I'm straight up, and I'm positive, and I'm going to be truthful about what transpired. On last Thursday, the three of us were informed on this council that one of the members of this city council summoned our city manager, who represents all seven members of council, to his church. And he indicated to her, you are either to resign, or I have four votes to fire you. That is what took place. Now, let's, hold on, please, please. We have to keep the decorum in the chamber. Please understand, those four members of council that you saw just raise their hands, they did not follow the correct order of things. I am the elected chair and the leader of the city of Portsmouth, and these are my colleagues who were elected. As a result, out of the proper order and courtesy of how we operate, we should have been at least given the information that one of our members called someone to his church and shared with her, she either resigns or she will be fired. That is unacceptable, and I will never stand, I will never stand for anything that is unacceptable. I do not care who you are. I have watched our city manager stay up late at night, work herself to the bone, and I have watched her cry with the mothers of lost children. I have watched her, I have watched her, I have watched her support our youth and cry at night when those young people are harmed and hurt in our community. And I will not stand by and watch a miscarriage of justice take place. And I will add this, this individual who summoned her to his church, he's the one who likes to talk about being fair and equitable and treating our people right. This woman deserves all of the credit that I will ever give her. And if any one of, if any one of those individuals want to say something contrary to what I just shared, to show what they did discuss, because there was a meeting between four individual council members of this council that took place, whether it was in person or on the phone, and you, as the citizens, must hold them accountable for their actions. Mr. Mayor, let me, sir, I did not give you the floor yet. I did not give you the floor, and you will not have it until I acknowledge you. You will not have the floor until I acknowledge you. And if you are out of order, sir, I will ask you one time, and then I will have you removed from this chamber, because I will not have this place made a mockery of. Would you like the floor, sir?
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Mayor, I can, Mayor, I can understand your emotion. And you have a tendency to show that emotion whenever you can have your way. First of all, I didn't meet with anyone, and that's unfair for you to say or insinuate that four people met or talked on the phone, and I didn't talk to anyone and didn't meet anyone. So, I don't mind you, you know, your emotional outburst, that's cool. But please, by all means, speak on what you know, because I was not a part of anything that you're talking about. When I make my decision, I make my decision without emotion for the best results of our city. See, I don't forget that we got kids being killed. I don't forget that we raising taxes on our folk. I don't forget these things, you understand? So, whenever I make a decision, it's a logical decision. And I don't know how you have already come up with my decision. I know you're a genie sometime.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, yeah, I don't know with this insinuating of four council members or people meeting behind closed doors coming from, that is not evident. Councilwoman Burke actually came to me and discussed some rumors that she heard, and once again, I said I didn't know anything about what no one else is doing, but all I can speak for myself, because I am only one vote. And my thing is, anything that I had to say, I talked with our city manager, our former city manager, about. So, any concerns that I had, I talked to her, and I don't want to be included in anything that our mayor is insinuating right here in this dais.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I did hear the information last Thursday, and I was quite alarmed at a time in our nation where women are misrepresented, underrepresented, not represented, mistreated. This is egregious for this male-dominated council to make this decision today. At a time when my Delta sisters, and this is our Delta sister, is here for our Delta Day, to make this kind of mockery of women is egregious. At a time in our nation when Ken Tanji Brown was confirmed by the Congress to be the highest ranking member in the Supreme Court, and this council chooses to degrade women, I'm pissed as a [bleep], and I ain't going to say it, because you know I can say it, but I'm going to be cool with it, but I'm pissed. I spoke with Woodard, and I spoke with Battle, and I asked him, had you heard this information? And they did not. They said they did not. But Mr. Battle told me, I won't go go for it. She's been a great city manager. I'm not going to put her down. But you sat here and you lied in my face. You lied in my face, Mr. Battle, and I want you to lie to these people to say that you didn't say that. You said that this woman has done her job, and she has been nothing but great to this community, which we know. We know she has done her job. We know she has bent over backward. We know she has looked aside to some of the votes that you have tried to have people pay you all for votes, that she looked aside, that she could have reported. She got a lot on this council, and that's why they want to get rid of her. And I hope that y'all seeing what's happening.
Hold on.
And I hope you make your decision when November comes.
Councilwoman.
I'm pissed as a [bleep]. Yeah, I'm a fan. I'm mad as a [bleep].
Hold on, Councilwoman.
I am, because I know what's been going on. I know somebody came to my office and asked me to deal with this stuff, because they've been asked to be paid $3,000.
Let's take a recess. I'm going to recess this meeting right now.
I'm sick of it.
We're going to recess the meeting right now.
I'm sick of it.
The meeting is called back to order. And before we deal with the motion and the second that is on the floor, Councilwoman Lucas Burke would like to say something.
I want to, you know, thank you all for allowing me an opportunity to vent, but on behalf of my sisters and my church members, my pastor, I apologize for my language. I do not apologize for my sentiments on how I spoke it, but I do apologize for the profane language. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We do, ladies and gentlemen, please, we have an agenda to complete. We do have a motion and second on the floor. Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been on quite a few councils in the last 24 years, and tonight is a first. I've never seen a city manager disrespected like Ms. Jones has been disrespected. You know, when you hire someone, they make a commitment to you, and you should make a commitment to them. She moved back to Portsmouth, invested in Portsmouth by purchasing a home, and she's invested in our city by working her butt tirelessly off to make the city a better place to live, work, and play. And just a few weeks ago, we did a formal evaluation of her, and she did not score where she deserves to be terminated. In fact, her scores were, I think, high average. And that's accounting for some ridiculously low scores. So, she is on the road to addressing some needs in this city, and she's doing it in a professional manner. Unfortunately, she's not being treated professionally. And that makes me angry. It embarrasses me. I'm a native of this city, and I've seen a number of people that needed to be terminated, but she's not one of them. And stop and think, she hadn't been here hardly a year. In fact, I don't think it's been a year yet. And can you imagine a city letting a city manager go in less than a year? And can you imagine a city letting a city manager go in, in less than a year? What does, what does that signal to the region on being able to recruit somebody for any position to come to our city? That sends the worst kind of a signal, that you don't want to go to work in Portsmouth because they, they might wake up one morning and say, "We getting rid of you because you, you might have looked at council the wrong way." You know, we're a legislative body, and that legislative body, four people, can do anything, as long as it's not illegal. And terminating Ms. Jones is not illegal, but I can tell you what, it's the wrong thing for this council to be doing. I would like, I would like to appeal to my four colleagues that, please reconsider that, because you're gonna, you're gonna be tainting our city, and you're gonna, you're gonna be, we're gonna be the headline in the paper, on the news. You know, we, we can do some good things in this city. And she's, she's got the plan to do it, and, and I like to think that most of the people on this council want to do the right thing, but tonight somehow they, they've taken the wrong track, and that's the wrong thing to do. So colleagues, Councilman Battle, Vice Mayor, Dr. Whitaker, Dr. Woodard, I appeal to y'all to reconsider what you're about to do, because it's gonna take a long time to heal the wounds and a long time to get this city back on track. So please reconsider. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And, and I, I, I have to give the manager an opportunity. She has asked for the floor. Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that when I elected to apply for this position, I applied for it because it was God's purpose for my life at the time. So the decisions that man is making on this dais tonight does not control my future. I am going to continue to work on my assignment, and whether that assignment is here or somewhere else, I'm going to give it my best, and that's all I know how to do. But I was warned that if I didn't accept that resignation, that I would be terminated, so I'm not surprised. But I am not a quitter. I came here under a 4-3 vote, and I knew that I could leave under a 4-3 vote. And so that is what it is, and I'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We do, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No.
Y'all, y'all, y'all disgusting. I hope the voters pick both of your [bleep] office councils, not worthy of it.
Yeah. All right. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. You, you, you have, you have heard the vote called. I think we all need to govern ourselves accordingly as we move forward. We still have an agenda to complete, and Madam City Manager, I just want to say to you, thank you. Thank you. We have now come to the item on the agenda, non-agenda speakers, and I would like to remind everyone of the speaker's statement. Madam Clerk, would you read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker is Katina Gottfried. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Katina Gottfried. My name is Katina Gottfried, and I'm the grandmother and the guardian of Richard Tucker. My grandson was in the gym on February the 1st playing basketball, and when he came out of the gym, he was ambushed and killed. Me personally, like, I don't understand. When I goes and talk to the detectives and stuff, they can say the people name before I can even get it out my mouth, but yet and still, these guys are still riding around, shooting people, riding down my street. I don't have nothing going on, but they still riding down my street after they done killed my grandson. Okay? This man, this gentleman over here asked me to call him. I gave up, I called him three times, left it on his voicemail and everything. I haven't gotten nothing. I haven't gotten an answer about nothing. To me, I want to know, when a person kill multiple people, what are they called? Serial killers, right? But these guys are still walking around here. My son is in prison and ain't killed no one, but he was defending himself, but they gave him 15 years. But person that killed my grandson is still walking around here and killed some more people. You get what I'm saying? I don't feel like I'm getting help. You see this right here? This is what I got to see, you know? I'm hurt. I'm hurt. My baby, I got a video. My baby sitting there playing basketball, didn't even know what was gonna happen when he left out of there. But he's gone. He's gone, and y'all not doing nothing to help. I sit up here and I, not only for mine, it's a lot of these mothers is walking and riding slow behind their kids. It's not fair, and people still ain't doing nothing to help us. Ms. Jones, I really love you. You sit there at that meeting, you cried with us. You felt us, and these people is not gonna understand till they hit their, to their door. I don't like this. It's something that y'all can do. You say you get one gun? I believe you can get, excuse me, you can get plenty of guns, 'cause I tell you what, if they sit there and said that these people had so many keys loads of dope in their house, I bet you y'all done got everybody to kick in doors. Everybody. But now, people running around here killing people, you not picking up? Ain't nobody getting picked up. Ain't nobody getting picked up. It's not right. It's not, and I need answers. I need answers. Really, I do. I do. I want to go to court. I want these boys punished. You know what I'm saying? My baby is in the ground. I got to relocate because these boys keep riding down my street. I don't do nothing. I'm scared to come out of my house. I call Sandra every time. I don't want to go to these meetings because I'm scared. I'm right down here by South Side, you know? And it's not right. I can't go nowhere. Nowhere. I'm scared. I'm very scared. And it's not right. And all I ask y'all to do, handle it, please. Please. Please, let my baby rest, you know? Let him get justice, you know? That's all I have to say. I just want help, you know? It's not right. It's not right. Y'all can get these guns. Y'all can get these guns up out here. Y'all can, and kicking these doors. Kicking these doors like they had drugs in there. Kicking them doors. Kicking them doors. I guarantee you, if they can sit there and tell me who did it, they can pick them up. I couldn't even come out my mouth. They said it first, and had pictures showing me a picture, showing me a picture this one, showing me a picture that one. But why they not gone? Why ain't get no, no subpoena on, on my door saying, "We got to go to court"? I'm not getting none of them. But I get them riding past, sitting there by my door, sitting there. I'm gonna leave it alone, but I just want some help, y'all. For real. I really need it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Like, really.
Be sorry for your loss. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Kadoldick-Yutrowski.
Mr. Mayor, Council, other neighbors. I was totally unprepared for what has turned into the conclusion of this meeting or the, the last act before the conclusion. I didn't see it coming. So I'm casting about for words to speak that will keep me consistent with your rules. And there's a quote from the great Albert Einstein that comes to mind, at least it's attributed to him. When asked what the difference was between genius and stupidity, Dr. Einstein is said to have replied, "Genius has limits." Madam Manager, I want to thank you for your service to our community. I want to thank you for putting your heart and soul into performing this job. I've been a resident of Portsmouth for 25 years, and I would have to say that you are, in my experience, in the top tier, if not at the pinnacle of the pyramid in terms of managerial skills. And the fact that a majority of this council is unable to recognize that tells me that they are not competent to hold the positions that they've been entrusted with. They're not competent to hold the positions they've been entrusted with. And those seats belong to us, the people collectively. I do not have the power to fire you on my own say-so, but I will say that I will work across party lines, across racial lines, across gender lines, across many philosophical lines to work with other people in this community who agree with my perspective and will do everything that the law allows us to do to empty those four seats. No need to belabor the point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Cedric Cradle. Five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, wonderful city manager, another guest of the city. My organization, Unseen Till, comes before you again. I'm kind of stuck for words right now because of what I, what had just transpired. First of all, I want to give, and my organization want to give kudos to the city manager, because she met with so many mothers a month and a half, two months ago, where it had never been done in the city of Portsmouth, a city manager meeting with the victim's mother to, to try to get some resources in place. And the only other person that was there was our mayor. No other council members were there. So I gotta call it a spade a spade. So when you hear the things that's going on now, it's, it's a shock to the parents. It's like a, you stabbing them even more. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, and I don't mean to call you guys' names, I'm not being personal. I know it shouldn't be, but it's, it's, this is egregious, man. And when, when you can sit up there and have a smirk on your face and the people voted you in here, I, I just don't understand it. I know this is being televised, but this is, this is, this is, this is a sad day in Portsmouth. Well, we got four council members, four, who have showed the ultimate disrespect to not only a city manager, but somebody's mother, somebody's wife, somebody's child, and, but we got these titles, pastor, doctor. But I don't want to get off, I don't want to get off the context because we have a job to do. There are over 60 unsolved murders in the city of Portsmouth, but none of y'all addressed that issue. None of y'all, Mr. Battle, Mr. Woodard, you guys have a crime prevention plan, and in this crime prevention plan, you have a portrait of where the most violent crimes happened in our city. But guess what, Dr. Whitaker? There are no CCTVs in most of these areas, but I heard you say nothing about it. Shot Spotted, yes, it is in Swanson Homes, and it may be in other cities, I mean, other localities in our city, but you never said nothing about it. So again, where is your focus? It's not these mothers, it's not the victims. See, y'all playing, I told you, play word games. And when you sit up there in these high places, you should already know God says, he sits high and he sits low, and he see what's going on. And things are being shaken up right now, and I understand that. And you guys think you know, you think you doing the right thing, but I'm gonna do the right thing and continue to speak for the voiceless and the young men and women who have lost their lives to gun violence since y'all go sit around here and play with somebody's livelihood. Charles Mosley, Cor Ture, and these are all unsolved murders in your city, Mr. Battle. Emmanuel Ture, Jaquan Johnson, Antonio Emmanuel Turner, Jaquan Johnson, Antonio Atkins, Carlton Dodd, Tashik Wolf, Jeff Basemore, Anthony Skeeter, Rayquan Morgan, Tasia Hicks, Delvin, Jamel Kinghead Howard, Darian Granger, Amaja Lee, Demar Sykes, Lakeisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Josh Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Norwell, Shashim Kerway, James Hill, Dante Collins, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javon Williams, Kamodra Howard, Quan Epps, Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Tim Shine, Brian Williams, Marquell, Curtis Walton, William Suffrage, Carlton Baines, Antonio Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andrew Hall, Kiara Victor, David Branch, Lawrence Kofa, Crystal Jacobs, Julius Hirsch, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boobie Staten, Malina Everett, Maury Collins, Andre Bell, Kareem Boucher, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamar Mitchell, Keith Warren, and Waykron Gray. There are so many other issues that we ain't tackling. And it's sad on this day that we're gonna lose a city manager who assisted these mothers in this organization in getting resources that they had never gotten from any other politician, any other city around here. So Dr. Whittaker, Chris Woodup, Barnes and Battle, you are a disgrace.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anitra Hampton. Sir, you are out of order. I told you, you are out of order. And if you persist, I will have to have you removed. You did not have the floor. You did not have the floor. You did not have the floor. You have to raise your hand, and then I acknowledge you, and then you have the floor.
Thank you.
Ms. Hampton, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Anitra Hampton. No one knew my name before Mayor said it. But him and Ms. Jones. The only two that knew my name. Ms. Jones, thank you. Thank you. Mayor, thank you. Y'all don't know. Y'all hurt me all over. This woman right here was the only light I had down here at City Hall. For having justice for my child. For feeling whole again. Like someone really cared. My son, Nicholas Suggs, was taken from me September 30th. My only child. I never came and asked for nothing. I was a single parent most of the time. So many times, I worked two jobs. Ain't asked nobody for nothing. Now that he's gone and the only person that cared, y'all throwing her away. Y'all throwing her away like y'all throwing our children away. Because that's what you're doing. You never came to me. You never came to me. You never came to me. She came to me plenty times. Met me after meetings. Hugged me. One time, she even told me, "I wrote your name down" for some reason. Why would y'all take that from us? Why would y'all take her from us? This city already took our kids. And y'all gonna take the only person on this council that cares. Because you don't. You can say you do, but you don't. Because I bet you can't say no by his name. Not one mother. Not one father. Not a sister. Not their child. But you supposed to be from Portsmouth. I'm from Portsmouth. Born and raised. Worked in Portsmouth. Went to school in Portsmouth. Volunteered for schools in Portsmouth. Never asked for nothing. From Portsmouth. And y'all couldn't even give us the opportunity. They said, "Oh, no." Well, speak with us. Speak with the parents so we can let y'all know what Ms. Jones do for us. And maybe y'all could get on board with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Dr. Kelvin Turner.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I have to change what I was gonna say because I didn't expect what we had tonight. I'm gonna read part of what I had. This letter comes to your attention regarding a deep and abiding concern for municipal government and among the city leaders for the unification of our elected officials. The city of Portsmouth, like the state of Virginia and many communities across our landing countries, facing a critical and challenging time and season. Nationally, we are facing challenging times. When residents have to wrestle whether to go to grocery stores in their own community. When teachers have to alter or abstain from teaching accurate and accountable history. When the power of the dollar and partisan politics prostitutes the process that results in healthcare disparity, diminished voting rights, and the great debate over who has the right to choose. Locally, the surge of urban and gang violence, escalation of gas prices, food insecurities, housing insufficiency, and educational inequity all speak to how Portsmouth is treading the waves and the waters of these challenging times. And while the intent of this letter is to focus on critical and unified leadership, I don't want to miss the opportunity to celebrate the accomplishment that continues a forward momentum for the city of Portsmouth. Ironically, in this paper, wrote the accomplishments of city council. Because I should have said, amidst the crisis of COVID pandemic, the city manager has been able to develop a multifaceted crime reduction plan. I said it was city council, but I should have said, city manager increased business, economic commitments, and opportunities. I should have said the city manager secured grants and developed partnerships for community services and programs. I should have said the city manager was able to secure business, economic, and workforce partners. That the city manager was able to increase partnerships with community stakeholders to include civic leagues, churches, and community organizations. That the city manager was able to address derelict, defective, and abandoned properties. That the city manager was able to increase employment opportunities and fill critical positions to include Director of Museums and Tourism and Chief of Police. That the city manager intensified the visibility and the presence of city leaders and services in the community. You know, originally, I said, "Thank you." And I was gonna say, Portsmouth is blessed to have a committed mayor. I did say caring council, but really, it's a compromised council. A competent city manager, a capable police chief, and a commendable sheriff. As we enter this summer season, we do so knowing that the residents of Portsmouth desires and deserves unified leadership. Although we're not severely challenged by partisan politics, we do seem to be divided by petty personal agendas. And we deserve better. Some of the decisions made by this council, including the one tonight, was divisive, degrading, and unbecoming of any elected official that serves the citizenry of Portsmouth. You've been called for a critical moment like this. I said, "Good leadership prevents problems, pursues possibilities, and promotes progressive agendas." What I said was, if the city was gonna be great, it begins with leadership. And I said, "Your leadership." But my daddy said, "You can't send a boy to do a man's job." I said, "You must move beyond good leadership. You must retain good leadership." You must move beyond employing good leadership. You must empower, encourage, enhance good leadership. You must endorse, endure, enforce, and what we should have been doing to Angel Jones, endow good leadership. It's a shame what happened tonight. You have spoken, but the voters will speak again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merle Rutledge.
I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything at all. What I just saw here was the most disrespectful, disgraceful act done publicly against one of your fellow colleagues. And I apologize directly to you, Ms. Jones, where others should be. But let me get to the point here. I know we have so many people in this room, many of you who've lost loved ones. But we can't blame the people in this room. None of us shot anybody. And I pray to God, nobody is here that is responsible for those murders. See, the problem is not only with leadership, but as well, a community that stays silent when we lose our loved ones. This is all of our responsibility. We cannot take our sights off the killer. We must focus on justice here and now. Or we gonna face the same injustice anywhere we go. One mother losing their son or daughter, or father losing their son and daughter could easily be you. And the silence is deafening all over Portsmouth, but all over this country. People are desperate. They are fighting inflation. They are fighting gas prices. They are fighting to go to work. They are fighting to live. This is why we have crime here. Where we lack any kind of plan that continues to fail. Buyback of guns has continued to fail. That's because parents, leaders, and the community is failing right now. See, I don't sugarcoat anything. I remember there was a time where I used to go home. My mother wouldn't let me leave out the house until I did my homework. Now it was wrong. She'll make sure I had to double-check it to make sure it's right. Are we double-checking our response? No, we're not. We letting our youth go outside to a world that they are not ready for because of the folks today are not ready for tomorrow. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and many civil rights leaders would be ashamed of us right now. See, we judge sometimes more than just by the color of our skin. But sometimes, we are vulnerable just because we think we are better than somebody when we really are not. Only God has given us all the glory, and we are allowed today to be able to speak about what's going on here now in Portsmouth, what's going on all across this country. People are needing your help for all social, to the community. They are needing your responsibility and accountability to bring back what is missing in our kids' eyes. And that's hope. Now, I came up here to focus on plans and suggestions to you so we can see Portsmouth and we can see this whole district look better. One of the major things I'm gonna get off that subject and stick to exactly what I said, I was gonna say, but the emotions ran through me. We need to come up with a mutual aid agreement between Portsmouth, Suffolk, and a bunch of other counties as well. And look at natural resources so we can reduce the gas prices and start to drill here in Virginia and start doing everything to explore different options so we can bring the prices down. People need to go to work, but we are able to do exactly here, not depend on Russia. My next focus is on crime prevention. We must have the community and leaders start looking at the fact who's responsible for the killing needs to be brought to justice. We want justice. In order for to bring inflation down, people have to get back to spending, and more revenue needs to come back into this city. The number one thing that's causing the problems is transportation. Police are focusing on minor traffic stuff, which y'all used to call racial profiling. Now it's became depletion of people's funds from the ground up. People need to go to work and have the right to work. That brings in revenue, not closing down, destroying businesses. See, people, people need to start coming up here with a plan, and the community needs to start showing up at these meetings. But I would like to tell everybody on this council, thank you for your time. And hopefully, we could talk in the future about ways to make this city better because we have seen the worst of the worst right now.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. William Dotson. And sir, you have five minutes.
Lisa, if I can help, call me. Tonight was horrible. I'm sorry, you guys may have a reason that you think is justified for the vote you had tonight. And you may be right. But the way it was done tonight was horrible. The method that you went about of letting us know what your reasons were, of explaining to us why you would do what you did tonight was absolutely horrible. I work with this lady. She's a wonderful, wonderful woman. I admire her a lot for the work that she's done. I don't agree with her on everything, but she's very respectful of my opinion, and hopefully, I've been respectful of hers. Please, reconsider your vote tonight. Take it back. Come back to us if you have reasons. Explain to us. Tell us what's going on. Don't do what you did tonight. Please don't do this. And if you're gonna stick to the vote and you're not gonna explain it to me, don't ever speak to me again. Ever. Don't address me on Facebook. Don't ever speak to me. You better have a darn good reason for what you did tonight. And it better be good. Tonight, I came to talk to you about still the same problem we've been having. Nine hundred million. The city's falling apart. Nine hundred million dollars in infrastructure we need. Steve Martin, I don't know if you've ever spotted, or if you're old enough to remember the routine he did on Saturday Night Live where he got up there and Mayor, if you don't mind me using a couple of words that may not be acceptable, but they're not my words. They're words that were used on TV.
Sir, please, please use words that are acceptable. Please.
And he got up there and he basically, and you'll tell me whether it's acceptable or not, he repeated a certain line, and his line was, "What the hell is that?"
Please, please use words that are acceptable.
Was that unacceptable?
Heck would be fine.
Say what?
Heck.
Okay, thank you, sir. And he repeated the line over and over and over to show the diversity of his talent in acting. It was a cute little line. And you heard me at the last meeting just say, "Nine hundred million dollars." And it's to get your attention over and over again. To say, "We have nine hundred million dollars over and above the budget that needs to be addressed." addressed." I spoke to one of the members on the staff today about how much is being addressed to that amount, and he told me between nine and twenty million dollars a year. Well, even just for simple inflation, that's one to two percent. Inflation's well over ten percent. We're not even addressing the issue. So some of the members told me at the last meeting that the issue is being addressed. I'm sorry, nine to twenty million dollars doesn't even address the inflation of the cost of that nine hundred million dollars in structure, in infrastructure that we need. So I want to take a minute to repeat, repeat something in the light of Steve Martin. Nine hundred million dollars. I'm not as talented as he is, but I'd like to say, "Nine hundred million dollars." As Steve Martin would say, "Nine hundred million dollars in infrastructure." Nine hundred million dollars. I'm not a comedian, so just to make a point, nine hundred million dollars. Still got another minute, but let me say, please justify your actions tonight. It better be good. It better be darn good. Angel, stick with us. Please.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Shwanzetta Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
To the Honorable Mayor Shannon Glover, Vice Mayor Deandre Barnes, and members of the council. I am Shwanzetta Williams, the Vice President of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I bring you greetings on behalf of our chapter president, B. Lisa Downey Hood, and the 245 members of our chapter. I would first like to recognize two of our very own, one who serves and one who served. The Honorable Lisa Lucas Burke, thank you. Sarah Angel Jones, thank you. My prayer is that you would continue with your calm mind, with your courageous spirit, barring bitterness from your heart, that you would continue to strive all the more earnestly to reach the goal. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an organization of college-educated women committed to the constructive development of its members and to public service with a primary focus on the Black community. The Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta has worked over seventy-eight years to the mission of the sorority and has worked diligently to provide services to the residents of Portsmouth and the Hampton Roads community through its programs and initiatives in our organization's five-point programmatic thrust. On March 4th through the 6th of 2022, we participated in our 33rd Annual Delta Days in the nation's capital. At this annual event, we were equipped with tools necessary to implement the sorority's social action agenda for the communities in which we live, in which we work, in which we serve. This conference promoted for us leadership, advocacy, and empowerment among our members to bring effective solutions to social challenges. This year, over forty-five hundred of our sorority members gathered to discuss Delta's legislative priorities with impact to our communities, and those legislative priorities are as follows. The Voting Rights Act, Access and Engagement, Student Debt Crisis, Redistricting, Economic Justice, and Re-Imaging Public Safety. Supporting those priorities, the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter is specifically focused on the following. Implementing real public safety that comes from dramatic investment in critical resources addressing the root cause of trauma, economic security, and disparities. This includes job availabilities, increased community resources, and addressing public safety legislation that targets gun reform, illegal drugs, and increasing gang-related violence in our communities. Thank you, Sarah Jones, for being that for us. Providing equitable access to broadband in underserved communities, encouraging innovation by bringing high-speed internet to every area of Portsmouth. In particular, the disbursement of monies Portsmouth receives from the rescue bill so that children can obtain internet access in our city and can improve broadband network to access and spur economic growth. We also want to ensure that every eligible voter in our community can engage in the electoral process. And after tonight, we see that that's very important and valid here in the city of Portsmouth. We also want to offer equitable access to health. Advancing health equity in Portsmouth is critical to ensure that everyone can attain full health potential regardless of social and political determinants of health. We oppose efforts to use block grants that strip health care from low-income children, elderly, and disabled citizens. As such, we look forward to continuing an open dialogue with you, our city officials, to work with you. We invite you to come and attend our upcoming Call for Action to Get Out to Vote because we will be mobilized to ensure that the citizens of Portsmouth are out to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Robin Parham, Parham, Robin Parham. You have five minutes.
Thank you. How everyone doing? I know each of y'all on different platforms. Ms. Jones, I thank you for what you've done. I thank the mayor, Councilman Wood for coming to Tea with a Purpose, and Ms. Burke as well. I've sat on a bench with you when your children were playing ball. I remember Mr. Moody with his issues with Garrett Waters. You coached my grandchildren. I'm embarrassed because I brought my children. And she's eight years old. She's, she's ten, and Jalen is eleven. And the first thing she said to me, I took him out of here because of what happened, and she come back and she said, "Did that lady get fired?" I said, "Was embarrassing for him." She said, "Yeah, because I woke up to a bunch of mess because she went to sleep." I'm embarrassed because my mama only sister is a Delta. And she love her Delta sisters. So I'm embarrassed. I feel sorry for her. My aunt is standing here right now. My mama only sister. And I didn't even come up here for that. But it's hard, it hurt my heart to see my aunt's sisters go through something because if it was my sister, I know what I would do. But I come up here because my son was killed. May the 22nd of last year. 2017 Victory Boulevard. I asked that the cameras, they start functioning, but I'm not sure if they work. When I came up here last time, I told you my son was shot so many times, I didn't know. So now I'm going to tell you what the medical examiner told me. It's my son body. Jeffrey Bazemore, a twenty-three-year-old man, was found unresponsive in a road with multiple gunshot wounds. Responded, responded emergency personnel attempted to resuscitate, but Mr. Bazemore was ultimately pronounced dead at the scene. An autopsy, Mr. Bazemore was found to have seventeen gunshot wounds, all of which deemed to contribute to the death by blood loss. Most of these gunshot wounds was injured, only soft tissues of the extremity, but some injuries, bones, and major blood vessels. The gunshot wound to the head, to the head caused multiple skull fractures, bleeding, and brain injury. Gunshot number one, gunshot number two to the head would have been individually fatal. Gunshot wound vessel number three to the torso with possible injury to that vessel. And gunshot number eleven to the right thigh, possible injury to the femur may have been individually fatal. Natural pathogen did not cause or contribute to death. Cause of death, multiple gunshot wounds. Manner of death was homicide. It also tells me that no drugs was detected. My son was not a drug user at all. He didn't drink alcohol. He was out having a good time, gambling. It hurt, y'all. It hurt. You might not feel it. It hurt when a stinger death hit your door, when your children is taken away from you in such a manner. Theirs might not have been killed like my son. But you know what I say? Why? For a girl? No. He ain't steal nothing from no store. Look at it. Please look at it. Please believe me when I say it. Headshot, enter, exit. No mama should ever had to see this. That's their brother. She made that for me just Sunday. Sunday made a yield. She took the time to do this for me. That hurt. That hurt, y'all. I never understand, but I appreciate all y'all. It's embarrassing.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn the meeting tonight, I did want to remind everyone, we do have a couple of events in the city. The Yemoja Festival, the 30th Annual Yemoja Festival will take place beginning on Friday through the 27th of May through the 29th of May. And also, we will be having the Memorial Day Parade. It will be back on May the 30th. The Otis Continuous Memorial Day Parade right here in Portsmouth. So govern yourselves accordingly and be prepared to come out this weekend for Memorial Day Weekend. And I want to also say, let us not forget to honor those men and women who served our country and gave the last full measure so that we would enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy today. The last thing I want to say, and this is real personal, I apologize for my level of unprofessionalism tonight if it was deemed so. I will say, as an African-American man who has an African-American daughter and an African-American wife and an African-American mother, you see what is represented up here. I can tell you, when I was elected to be the mayor of this city, I was excited about working with folks that really wanted to come together to make the positive change that I desired. But let me be clear, and I have no reason to tell you otherwise. I met with some of these individuals. Two of them, one of which at his church, told me I need to determine which master I'm going to serve. Okay? He didn't like the fact that white people contributed to my campaign, and so I'm owned by white people. Shannon Glover is not owned by anyone but God. Let me be clear. The other individual told me that I went to his office, that we weren't going to do anything we wanted to do. My whole idea of working and meeting those individuals was to say, "Brothers, let's work together for the betterment of our city. Let us create an example of excellence that we always talk about." This could be and should be our time to do something exceedingly more. But yet again, we have failed the citizens of Portsmouth. I have failed the citizens of Portsmouth. I take that very seriously because if you know me, those who know Shannon Glover know that I don't play with that. So to my City Manager, our City Manager, I want her to know, I want you to know, Mr. Jones, what occurred here tonight is unacceptable. These cowards, and I'm going to call them cowards, and I don't care what the implication is, these cowards, these cowards decided to make a decision based on their own personal feelings, and it has no place in government, in relationships, or in what we do to make our community better. We're going to continue to do what we do, but I want you to leave here tonight, and yes, I'm a little bit angry. I am. But I want you to leave here tonight knowing that if you thought you wounded us, Mayor Glover is more committed than ever. And I want you to walk out of here tonight, Madam City Manager, like you walked in here. And I know you on purpose, so I know not to worry about that. But I want to thank you, the citizens, and once again, my humble apologies for my behavior because it is important that I send the right message, not only to the citizens who elected me, but to the people who want to come here and care about our city and see it grow and prosper. Thank you so much, and I wish you all well. Stay safe and healthy. This meeting is adjourned.